I'm going to read from a script because it's the easiest way to do it for me. My name is Matt Hopkinson. I am the project manager for this project. The project is Auburn Superstructure Replacement Interchange 10 over Route 12. Stand next to the microphone, that'd be a little better. I work in the bridge project management at Mass DOT's Highway Division headquarters in Boston. So, just so you know, your attendance at this hearing can be formally recorded. Once the hearing is over, the attendance sheet, which is over on the table there, will become a part of the public record for the hearing. So, please sign in and we can have your attendance part of the record. You can also, while you're over there, the sign-in sheet, there's handouts. They have details of the project, locust plan and so forth. And at the end, I'll talk more about that, but there's a comment sheet at the very back that you can use to input your comments either at the end of the meeting or by mail later. We have a great team here today. We can answer all your questions that you may have about the project. Lori Shattuck, she's our traffic expert tonight from our District 3 office. Mario Russo, over here. Hi, Mario. He's from our Right-of-Way Bureau. Ildiko Yuhaz, Ildiko Yuhaz, sorry, from Lewis Berger. She's our Mass DOT's design consultant for this project, as well as Liviu Sventescu and Greg Russo, also from Lewis Berger. And our transcriptionist, Ann Carrington, from Arlington Typing and Mailing. She'll be making a verbatim transcript of tonight's hearing. So, to have it included in the transcript, I'll add that the notice of the hearing appeared in the Telegram and Gazette on January 1st and 8th, and the Auburn News on January 4th, 2019. Copy of the notice is in the handout and will be attached to the final hearing transcript. So, the project we're talking about is to replace the deck and the superstructure of the bridge that carries interchange 10 over Route 12. We're going to maintain the abutments. And we're currently at the 25% design stage, which means we don't have all the details. There are things that we can change at this point. There are things that we may not be able to answer for you. We estimate the total project will cost about $9.3 million. And the money we're using for that is Western Turnpike funding. This funding comes from toll receipts on the Mass Turnpike. In a few minutes, Ildiko will present the details of the project. But first, I would like to ask Mario to explain the right-of-way procedure.
Good evening. Again, my name is Mario Russo, R-U-S-S-O. My number is area code 508. I forget my number. 721-4404. And if you have any questions in the future, you're welcome to call me at that number. The Right-of-Way Bureau is part of Mass DOT, the Highway Division, and we are responsible for acquiring all the necessary rights in land, public and private. Procedures used must comply with the state and federal regulations governing the acquisition process. Affected property owners' rights are protected under Massachusetts general laws, primarily Chapter 79. If a project is receiving federal funds, the property owners' further rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Act of 1970 as amended. Affected property owners will be contacted by personnel from the Right-of-Way Bureau as the project progresses. We are now at 25%, and there may be some easements taken or permanent easements that could be required. I will be here throughout the meeting and after in case anybody has any specific questions. If not, you're welcome to call me at any time and I'll be sure to get back to you with whatever information you need. Thank you.
Thanks, Mario. Now, Ildiko will describe Mass DOT's project in detail for you. Please keep in mind that the project we are presenting tonight is still in the design stage. Should I move this on to the next one? I did it. As you can see, these are the players involved. Mass DOT's involvement is, you know, obviously we're the proponent of the project. And we're hiring the engineers and we're providing the funding. Lewis Berger is the designers and Auburn DPW, or Town of Auburn, is providing coordination with the local issues. So, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Matt. I'll ask my team to come up so that we can just quickly switch. So, as Matt described, you know, this is a Mass DOT project, and any questions and comments, we'll go through them. Louis Berger is the designer, and we are closely coordinating with the DPW and the So, this map quickly shows the project area. The bridge replacement is going to happen near the Toll Plaza, the existing or rehabilitated Toll Plaza. So, this is I-90, I-290, 395, and the bridge carries traffic on and to the turnpike from Route 12 and the intersection with I-290 and 395. So, why do we need this project? Basically, the existing bridge was built in the '50s. It was, the deck was replaced 40 years ago, and it is getting old again. The deck is, right now, as you can see, in fairly bad condition. And the bridge itself has only one lane in each direction, so it's fairly narrow. The bridge carries about 40,000 vehicles a day, and something needs to be done in order to rehabilitate this bridge. Similarly, the traffic conditions, these pictures don't quite show it, but the traffic can be backed up pretty well. Coming from the Toll Plaza, it narrows down. This is looking towards the bridge, it narrows down to one lane. And some of the yield conditions from the other ramps are undesirable as well. So, by replacing the deck on the bridge gives us an opportunity to optimize and improve some of these movements. So, by doing this project, we will achieve several goals. We will improve the movements on the I-90 off-ramps. We will improve some of the yield conditions at these ramps. We will replace the existing bridge deck, and that will accommodate two lanes in the southbound direction, and one lane in the northbound direction. We will also replace the existing beams because they don't quite have the load-bearing capacity of today's traffic demands. And luckily, the existing piers and the abutments, as Matt has mentioned, don't need to be replaced. They can be rehabilitated. By doing this, we will also increase the vertical clearance under the bridge. So, to go over the scope, we will basically meet up in the north the recently remodeled old Toll Plaza off of the turnpike. The pink shows the bridge reconstruction. And as you can see, two lanes in the southbound direction will be created. And ramp K, which is a Route 12 on-ramp, will be realigned to improve the yield condition. And while doing this, we will also have to repave part of Route 12. As Matt had mentioned, Route 12 pretty much going to remain in the same cross-section as before, so in the final condition, it will pretty much look like as it does now just the way. So, going a little bit more into the details of the new bridge deck, up at the top, you can see the existing bridge. It's pretty much a symmetrical layout, one lane in each direction. And with the joint in the middle, the new bridge will be slightly wider, about 10 inches on both sides. And it will have shellover beams with higher strength steel. And the median will be realigned a little bit to one side to allow for the two lanes of traffic in the southbound direction. The project schedule, we have done the preliminary design, as Matt had mentioned. After the public hearing, we will move into the final design. It is expected to be finished middle of September. And after the bidding phase and construction award, construction is expected to start in the spring of 2020. So, without this construction, how will the traffic be affected? So, since the, as you could see, this is a fairly tight area, and there is no, and we are basically replacing the bridge in its current position. So, this requires several construction phasing and traffic phasing. So, altogether, we came up with five stages to facilitate traffic movement and bridge construction at the same time. So, at the beginning, the existing piers will be rehabilitated, and they will be done one pier at a time. In order to maintain traffic on Route 12, it will be shifted to the other pier. As Matt had mentioned, the sidewalk is going to be maintained, but we will have to reduce the Route 12 southbound traffic to one lane for this temporary condition. Similarly, when the other pier is going to be rehabilitated, it's pretty much the same thing on the other side. We will move traffic to the south and work on the northern pier again. The sidewalk will be maintained. The bridge itself will be, the bridge deck and beams will be reconstructed in three stages. In the, what we call Stage 2, the work zone in the middle will be created by narrowing down the traffic lanes on both sides to 12 feet, and that will allow enough room in the middle for the work zone. The existing bridge deck and the beams shown in red will be demolished, and the new section of the bridge will be built. In the next phase, we will move the, one of the lanes to the lanes that go to I-295 and I-395 to the newly constructed bridge area, and still maintain the I-90 on-ramp and work on the side of the bridge. Again, same thing, remove the deck and the beams and construct the new part of the bridge. And lastly, this is the last big stage for the bridge construction, do the same thing on the other side. At all these stages, one lane will, on the northbound and one lane on the southbound will be maintained. And at the end, the median will be constructed by creating a work zone again in the middle of the deck and building the barrier. So, as you can see, this whole construction sequencing will affect traffic. The whole sequence has been worked out such that traffic impacts are minimized. So, I'm going to turn it over to Liviu, who will explain some of the traffic movements a little bit in more detail.
Good evening. My name is Liviu Sventescu. I'm in charge of the civil design on this project. Ildiko talked about the construction staging of the bridge itself, the bridge deck and the bridge pier, so she explained the different stages that we require to construct the bridge. What I'm going to talk about is the full closures that will be needed in order to perform certain construction activities, which include lifting the beams with a crane over live traffic, placing concrete, constructing the new concrete barrier in the middle of the bridge, et cetera. So, during these activities, both Route 12 and the bridge itself will have to be completely close to traffic. On this slide here, we are showing with black arrows the traffic movements that are not impacted by these closures. With red X's, we are showing the movements that will be impacted by the closures. So, these movements will be replaced by the detours that I'm going to show on the next slides. And the blue rectangles represent traffic barricades, meaning locations where traffic will be stopped and diverted to another ramp. Now, it should be mentioned that all of these night closures are occasional. They will happen for a few hours, but different nights. And most people will probably not even be aware of them because the traffic is very low during this time. Since this project is located in an area with multiple ramp connections, there are two existing freeways, the Turnpike, 290/395, and two state routes, Route 12 and Route 20. There are multiple connections and multiple movements that will be affected by these closures. This map here shows all the seven detours that will be, sorry, eight detours, seven detours that will be needed. And the next slides, I'm going to go through them one by one. Okay, this slide, we're calling this Detour A. This is basically a detour for Route 12 northbound. So, I'm going to try to show it on the map. So, in today's condition, traffic is using Route 12 to access this point, two directions to north towards Worcester. This area will be closed right here. So, anybody wanting to go from this point to the north will have to take Route 20, then take the loop ramp onto 395, and then either use Exit 7 here to access this residential area, or access Route 12 up to this point where the Route 12 is closed, or they go to next exit, which is Exit 8, I believe, Swanson Road. Either turn left or right depending on the destination. The next slide shows the detour in the reverse direction. So, this is a detour for Route 12 southbound. So, anybody coming from Worcester wants to go south, they cannot go on Route 12 because Route 12 is closed underneath the bridge. So, they'll have to make a right on Swanson. Actually, we're showing two options for this detour. One that uses local roads and one that uses mostly freeway and ramps. So, the first option is to turn left, sorry, to make a right on Swanson Road, then take Vine Street here. There's an on-ramp right here to 290. Then continue on 290 up to the Cloverleaf Interchange here, take the exit to Route 20, and then make a right to Route 20 and access Route 12. Another option is to continue on Route 12 under the Turnpike and then to Church Street. Make a left on Church Street, continue to here. Church Street here becomes South Street. Continue on South Street, make a right on Route 20, and then go to the same point as what I explained before. The next slide, we're calling this Detour C. This is a detour for the ramp that connects 290 westbound to I-90, both directions. This detour is needed because the bridge itself will be closed. In today's condition, people are going to, people who travel on 290 and they want to go to I-90, they use this ramp here, the bridge, and then, I don't know, then they can access I-90. However, since the bridge will be closed, they'll have to use the previous exit. I think this is called Oxford Street, Oxford Street, sorry. Make a left on Route 12, use 12 for a short length, and then take the on-ramp to I-90. The next one, this is a little bit light, so maybe a little bit difficult to see. This is a detour for, pretty much for the movement that uses 290 and accesses Route 12. So, in today's condition, anybody coming from the south who wants to go through 12, some people may use Exit 7, so this ramp here, that takes them to Route 12. However, in the construction condition, they can still use Exit 7 and use Route 12, but only to the point where Route 12 is closed. So, if anybody wants to go beyond that point, they will have to use the previous exit, take the ramp, Route 20, and then that will take them to Route 12. Detour E is the detour that will replace the ramp that connects I-90 to 290 and 395. In today's condition, traffic from I-90 uses the bridge and a ramp that bifurcates with one ramp going north to 395 north, and then another one going south towards, sorry, to 290 north, and then another one going south to 395. Since the bridge will be closed, all traffic will have to take the exit that is just before the bridge, get to Route 12. And since there is no traffic on Route 12, traffic will be able to cross Route 12, take the on-ramp, and continue on the same ramp as existing condition. This will be what we call a controlled turning movement, meaning that police detail and flaggers may be needed to make to allow people to cross Route 12. The next stage, we're referring to this as Detour F. So, this is a movement that connects 290 westbound to Route 12 southbound. So, in today's condition, people coming from the northern 290, they take this ramp right here, they make a left, access Route 12. However, Route 12 will be, when Route 12 will be closed, traffic will have to take the next exit, so bypass this ramp, take the next exit here, make a right on Route 20, and access Route 12 at this intersection, at the Route 20, Route 12 intersection. The next detour is the detour for I-90 to Route 12 northbound. So, for this detour, in today's condition, people accessing Route 12 northbound, they take I-90, and then the loop ramp that's located here, this loop ramp right here. Since the bridge will be closed, everybody will have to exit prior to the bridge, take Route 12, make a left on Prospect Street, make another left on Route 20, then take the loop ramp back to the freeway, 395, go north and exit either here at this ramp, or, so exit either Exit 7 or Exit 8 depending on the destination. Again, this right provides access to this area. This ramp here provides access to this section of Route 12 and everything to the north. I believe this is the last detour. Detour H, so this one provides a connection from Route 12 northbound to I-90. In today's condition, that connection is, happens via this loop ramp right here. So, people come on Route 12, they take the loop ramp, and they go to I-90. However, the bridge will be closed, so nobody will be able to travel across the bridge. So, traffic will have to use Route 20, Washington Street, go, take the loop on-ramp, the on-ramp at 395, continue at 395 to the next exit, then exit to Route 12, and then take the on-ramp that is here to I-90. So, that's it for the detours. And I'm going to turn it over to Greg, who's going to talk about the environmental permitting.
Hey, I'm Greg Russo. I'm the environmental scientist on the project. I conducted the wetland donations, and I've been assessing the permitting requirements. For MEPA and EPA requirements, we're seeking a programmatic categorical exclusion. We will be submitting a notice of intent to the Auburn Conservation Commission and the Massachusetts EP. And then for the US Army Corps, 404 Clean Water, we are just needing to do pre-construction notifications for General Permits 1 and 10 for replacement of the bridge and transportation roadwork. So, pretty simple.
So, this concludes our presentation. Don't worry, even though those detours were quite numerous, they will only take one or two nights during the construction, different phases of construction, so they won't be like a permanent detour during this project. Now, I'm going to turn it back to Matt, and he can close out the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ildiko, Liviu, and Greg. As you can see up on the screen, I have my contact information there. If you want to get ahold of me at any time, there's my email address. That's my, you know, straight-to-me email address. I would point out also that the handout that we provide has another email address on it on the last page, I believe. And if it's not there, I'll provide it. But that one gets logged into our public affairs system. And then if I don't respond to you, I hear about it. Seeing the huge crowd here, I don't think there's going to be too much trouble there. Anyway, that's the other thing, is with the, with the handout, there's a sheet on the, in the back, it's a mail-in sheet. If you have any comments, I think it's online as well, isn't it, Bill? Yeah, so anyone that's listening in, they can download it and fill in the comments there. If we get them within 10 days of the hearing, we can include them in the transcript. But whether that happens or not, we will certainly answer any, you know, any comments or questions that come in that way. So, as I said before, you know, our hearing here is for is to get your input regarding the project. I have a whole list of how we go about taking input here tonight. First, elected or appointed officials get to talk, and then the general public gets to talk. So, between you two folks, you can, we'll take you in that order if you have any comments. If you want to make a comment, if you want to stand up and talk, please stand up, state your name, and then spell it for our transcriptionist so that she gets it right. And that's it. So, I think Bill's the elected official here, appointed.
Appointed, yes. Appointed. Just one quick question, Matt.
Yeah.
I think you may have mentioned, what is the duration of the project?
Ooh, I think it's three construction seasons, is that right? Or is it two?
It's two years.
Two years? Okay, yeah. So, I'm just used to number of stages times years, and that's what it is. So, I'm just used to number of stages times years, and that's what it is. Yeah, two years, two years to have that done. Okay, that's Bill Coyle. B-I-L-L-C-O-Y. Yeah.
E-D-O-R.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Paul Plautukas, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. P as in Peter, L-A-T-U, Keep It Simple, K-I-S. And I want to thank you for improving the bridge, and I know that MassDOT has some excellent engineers. As I drove home from the airport one night in the torrential rain, and there wasn't one puddle, all the drainage worked beautifully. So, we're expecting the same in Auburn, as you did on the Mass Turnpike. I want to suggest a couple of little things. One is that you use some of the terms like east and west. The Mass Turnpike runs east-west, and that might be good for the signage, especially for people not from this area who don't know that Framingham is east and Springfield is west. It's only a suggestion. I would also suggest that you help the town out in some way, since this ramp is in Auburn, and talk to the town administrator and see how that could be done and what would be the most appropriate signage. It might have to do with the Veterans Memorial Corridor, or that this is a Purple Heart Town. It might have something to do with Robert Gaudage firing his rockets here, something that helps Massachusetts and the Town of Auburn. Or it might be something related to business, where you put this... In this direction, you get to the Auburn Mall. I think something like that would be a little something back to the Town of Auburn from all the disruption. I was a little concerned when you mentioned Swanson Road, and perhaps you'll look at that turn if you haven't taken it recently. If you get off onto Swanson Road and you're going to take a left-hand turn, you're taking your life in your own hands. It's a tough turn, and there's a barrier there on the bridge. And if there's something you can do about that to make that a safer turn, that would be great.
Are you asking for that during construction, when we're utilizing it, or...
No, sir, it's only a suggestion.
Yeah, but I mean, is it something that permanent fix?
You could probably talk to the town and see if they consider it the same as I do. I know an awful lot of town residents that don't want to make that turn. And when you make it, someone may cut you in half coming down a hill heading for the So, I've talked about signage. One concern that I had, and I think it's a problem in the state of Massachusetts in several areas, and that's exit ramps. And it seems like you're very stingy in providing two lanes to get rid of bottlenecks. Let me give you an example. You're on the Mass Turnpike, you're heading towards Boston, you get off at 495. The exit ramp starts off with two lanes. Before you leave the ramp, both lanes are squeezed into one. Now, I had someone pass me from Ontario, and a man, I knew it was going down to one lane, but there's no way she could know it. So, she passed me to the left, and for some crazy reason, there's only one lane. You start with two for 300 yards, and then the last 100 yards, you bring it down to one lane. I don't understand that. And I hope nothing like that is going to be part of this project. I'd like to see two lanes on all the ramps, not just the exit ramp, but the on-ramp. I think that would help to believe you. I want to thank you very much for allowing the input, and I think it's going to be a great project.
Thank you. I guess that's as many comments as we're going to get tonight. Anyone else have anything else to say? All right, then, I'm going to close the hearing at 7:34 PM, and if anyone wants to take a look at any of the information we have here before we go, we'll be happy to stick around and answer any other questions that come up. All right, thank you.
Thank you.